Good afternoon. I'd like to welcome everyone to the Coffee County Board of Education's Special Call Meeting, June 3rd, 2024. This time, I would like to stand and Coach T, lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please, sir. You're the lucky one.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, it's good to see several people here. There are a couple other seats around. If anybody wants to come up, feel free to. All right, at this time, on the agenda, we'll call the meeting to order. It is public comment time. We did have one person sign up. It was actually Dr. Lawson to speak. And so, Charles Lawson, Dr. Lawson, if you would, you get five minutes to speak. And if you could state your name and your address, and then we'll give you your time to speak and address the board.
I want the board to be able to follow along. That way, there's no questions. You could pass that one direction, pass that another direction. There's your copy.
Okay.
Okay. My name is Charles Lawson. I live at 2889 Henry Cove Road in Manchester, Tennessee. And so, I'm exercising my right to speak on an agenda item at the Coffee County School Board meeting. At this point, I'll start. My contract has come up for renewal a total of four times in my tenure. I have never been afforded the opportunity to speak on my behalf. I have elected to utilize this time to exercise my right as a citizen of Coffee County to state my case for continued employment as the Director of Coffee County Schools. During my tenure, there have been numerous large projects to improve facilities. The renovations and expansions at New Union and North Coffee are now occupied. At Coffee County Central High School, we have added six classrooms, renovated restrooms, overhauled the theater, repainted the gym floor, installed new bleachers for baseball and softball, repaved all surfaces in front of the building, and are currently constructing a new CTE shop. The gymnasium at CCRA has been completely renovated with a new floor, roof, and windows. We have completed thousands of square feet of new flooring, installed dozens of new windows, installed LED lighting on multiple campuses, and updated the HVAC systems in every building where it was needed. All of this has been accomplished while completing regular maintenance and improvements throughout the district. Coffee County Schools has never been in better financial condition. I inherited a total fund balance of $6,818,109. We expect the total fund balance to be between $16.5 million and $17 million when the books are closed on the 2324 fiscal year. This represents a projected increase of approximately $10 million. During my tenure, each employee has received a total of $5,750 in bonuses. This represents a total outlay of almost $4.1 million. I have overseen the steepest increases to the certified pay scale in district history over the last several years. When I took over as Director of Coffee County Schools, was not ahead of Manchester City Schools on any part of the pay scale. The pay scale that you have behind this speech that I'm reading, the pay scale that you have before you is highlighted in each place where Coffee County Schools is currently projected to pay more than Manchester City Schools in the 2425 school year. As you can see, most teachers now make more in Coffee County Schools than in Manchester City Schools. This pay scale still needs the full approval of the Coffee County Commission. That's why you will see a watermark on it that indicates it is still pending. The percentage increases in the hourly classified scales have been even greater during my tenure. The lowest hourly pay when I started in 2019, 2020 was $8.71 per hour. In the 2425 school year, the lowest hourly rate should be $13.08, an increase of over 50 percent. Some will be tempted to claim that these financial successes are due to the federal ESER funds that the district has received. All of the ESER funds received by Coffee County Schools totaled $12,905,048.17. The increase in total fund balance and the total cost of employee bonuses is approximately $14.1 million. This means that even without ESER, the pay scale growth, completed and ongoing projects, and approximately 1.2 million of growth in the total fund balance would have occurred anyway. There have been measured academic successes within the district as well. When I arrived, Coffee County Schools had one reward school. The highest ever was two reward schools. At this time, the district has four reward schools. When the state began assigning letter grades to schools this past winter, the rest of the South Central Region had 34 percent of the schools receiving A or a B. Coffee County Schools had eight out of 10 schools receiving A or a B for a total of 80 percent. My tenure has been a series of events that have never happened prior to my arrival. Schools remained open during a pandemic. Every student has access to a mobile technology device. All employees are paid for their full experience on the pay scales. Various sports have reached levels never experienced, an eight-figure top fund balance, four reward schools, higher pay scales in Manchester City Schools, and numerous smaller accomplishments. Some on the board will say that I am not responsible for the athletic, academic, and financial successes that Coffee County Schools has experienced during my tenure. They are absolutely correct. These successes are the direct result of the hardworking employees throughout Coffee County Schools. However, the same board members who refused to give me credit for the successes would be using these same items against me if the data was worse than when I started. I am proud to say that I've been a part of Coffee County Schools' success over the last five years. To date, no board member has provided me or the public a legitimate reason why I should not be part of working for greater things in Coffee County Schools moving forward. While there are many things I am proud of during my time as Director, nothing has brought me more satisfaction than the feedback I have received from employees each time the board has failed to renew my contract. No matter what happens this evening, I feel that the people who know my value best are pleased with my service. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Lawson, for stating that and doing it in a timely manner. All right, at this time, I would like to entertain a motion to accept our agenda today. Action items, there are four items listed, and we all have those. And so, at this time, the floor is open for a motion to accept the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Rose, and who seconded, Mr. Crabtree? Okay. Are there any questions on these four items? Hearing none. Mr. Ballard, your vote first.
Aye.
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 Chair votes aye. That passes nine to zero. First item, first action item, A, the Director's Contract.
Mr. Chair, I move to, I make a move, after due consideration, I make a move to exercise Section 19E of the Director's Contract. This is essentially a contract buyout. And if we can second here and we move to the discussion portion, I will explain my logic in greater detail. I've given a lot of thought in the last couple of weeks, and I would like the opportunity to explain why I'm proposing this motion.
Okay, we've had a motion put on the floor. Waiting to see if we get a second. A motion by Mr. Ballard.
I'll second.
A second by Mr. Gilli. Okay, so we've had a, your motion, and you're the one that made the motion. Would you like to comment on this first?
Yes, I would. I mean, I've spent a lot of time thinking about this, and so I just kind of like to lay out my logic here for everybody involved. Number one, there was some talk of dismissing with cause. I don't think that that is in the interest of the board or the school system, so I don't think that that's a good move. We can continue on as is, or we can do a transfer. Those are both options that were, that are part of the contract. Now, I can tell you that continuing on is that I had, after our February 13th, or, well, February Board Meeting, I was confronted in public by Dr. Lawson, and among the things in the conversation was that he told me that he was looking forward to and would enjoy making the board's life miserable for the remaining term of his contract. Given what has transpired since that time, I have to take him at his word and believe that the present situation is going to continue. So, so I had hoped that was not the case, but I think we've kind of seen that. There is, there's another, a number of other provisions for termination in the contract, but I don't think they're relevant to us, which leads me to a buyout of the contract, which is Paragraph E of Section 19. And I, I believe that all the provisions in there, we can maintain those, and we would proceed with that. Now, Ms. Rose, in her, in the last meeting, asked a question, and it's a fair question, is why did I not vote for that when that was, that came up in our February Board Meeting? And I have two answers to that. One was, it did catch me by surprise, and so my initial reaction was not to vote for it. But two, I did believe at the time we could continue a professional relationship. And that has proven not to be the case. I don't think it's going to get better. Now, do I think that Dr. Lawson is an able administrator? Absolutely. And all the things that are listed in here, those are great. But I don't think we can continue with the adversarial relationship with the board. It interferes with the board business. It creates drama and toxic atmosphere at the school district. And so, I have come to the conclusion that a buyout of the contract is really in the best interest of the board and the school system.
Dr. Lawson, you, he made a specific allegation there about being confronted in a public, and I assume that you would want to respond, have time to respond to that.
Absolutely. Now, Mr. Ballard and I did have a conversation at Dunkin' Donuts. I was forwarded a post where he had said it was an ask-me-anything event, and so I attended. And he and I were the only two that were present at the table at the time. So, it looks like we're going to get into a he-said, she-said thing. Now, I'm going to say this. I have a lot of faults. One thing I'm not is a fool. I would never say something to a board member that would be construed as insubordination. And that statement right there would absolutely have been insubordination. Now, did we have a long conversation? Yes. Was it always pleasant? The answer is no. But I can say that I did not make the statement that Mr. Ballard has said I made. I don't know any other way around that. But that would not be anything. I mean, I can tell you right now, I have never, I have never been anything but professional in my dealings with board members. Sometimes, there have been a few times where there have been ill will expressed back and forth. And that has never started with me, and that has never continued beyond the bounds of this room. That's just the way it is. So, I don't know what else to say, except for that part of that conversation is false, and I can't say anything beyond that. I do have, I mean, that, the next day, I wrote down each topic that Mr. Ballard and I talked about, and I took a picture. I can pull it up on my phone and tell you what we talked about in that conversation, because I did not want to forget it. So, I can do that if the board wishes me to detail each topic of our conversation. But it, I never made the statement that I would try to make the board miserable. I did say, the closest I came was to say that I have always tried to keep things going as smooth as I can in board meetings and that kind of thing. I have less reason to make things go that smoothly. And that's the worst thing that I recall saying at that meeting.
Okay. Anybody else want to comment? Mr. Gilli, you made the second. Would you like to say
Despite every disagreement, every altercation, which technically wasn't altercation, we both feel wholeheartedly about smitements. The number one thing, and I've spent the last three days trying to come up with as a board, what we have actually done to better the education of our children. To me, that's top priority. I can't disagree with everything you have in your statement. But I think I can honestly sit here and say to myself, and as myself, I don't feel like I have done enough to actually benefit, one way or another, the education of a child. We have approved, appropriated, built, expanded, paid, raised pay scales. We have done every bit of that, at your recommendation. We have really strived. But I feel we are just stagnant in what we are all actually here for, which is the education of a child. And I don't feel we are making movements. And I think it has transpired into a not-so-great relationship between Tom and you, Mr. Lawson. And I just, I feel like that honestly, we've got to consider something here.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Respectfully, Mr. Gilli, we have four reward schools in this system, and we have established, under Dr. Lawson's leadership, we have established a salary scale that is going to help ensure the stability of the people who are in our classroom every year. And let me tell you, stability in a classroom is what helps students achieve. And I believe Coffee County is making progress with what I have seen, especially during my time on the board. And while, while we might say, well, we voted for these things. Yeah, we did. I voted for a lot of those things. But I didn't, I didn't get down there in an office and dig and do the budget work and do the research and try this scenario and that scenario. You know, that, that work, that work got done by the people who are employed by this district under Dr. Lawson's leadership. And if, if a big pay bump and four reward schools is misery, bring it on. I can take misery like that any day.
I have a question for Dr. Lawson. What was your purpose in going to Dunkin' Donuts, knowing that the board member was there?
My purpose, as I indicated to Mr. Ballard when I saw him, I was curious how many people would show up and what would be asked.
And so, you're, you're saying that Mr. Ballard is a liar. Is that correct?
I am saying that the statement he made is incorrect. I do not, I did not label anyone as a liar.
Okay.
Take it as you interpret it.
Have you ever stated that you wanted to make it difficult for a board member to anyone?
That I want to make it difficult?
Anything, make it, make it difficult to embarrass a board member?
No.
You've never said that?
I, well, I mean, as far as, as far as embarrassing a board member. Ma'am, in all the conversations I've had, I, the only time I can remember saying anything about a board member being embarrassed is when I have said, I don't have to try to embarrass board members. Sometimes they do it on their own. And I have said that before, yes.
Do we have any target schools in our system?
Do we have any target schools?
Targeted schools.
We, the middle school is classified as ATS I, additional targeted for intervention.
And how long has it been that way?
Well, it's been ATS I for one year. Previous to that, it was T S I. Previous to that, it was ATS I again. And then, it was ATS I, I believe, when I came in. But of course, there was the interruption in testing with COVID. And so, it has, it has been in that realm during my tenure.
You hear the comments?
Sure. I would like to respond to Dr. Lawson. I did too memorialize that, that conversation and did email that to the board's attorney. So, he does have that, that information. So, you know, that's, what can I say? That's, that is what was said. And, you know, there was, there was more to the conversation, but that's what's germane to this particular situation.
My couple comments are pretty brief and to the point. I said, I'm gonna, I'll just tell you, I cannot vote for this. It's going to be a big no, because I cannot put our taxpayers on the hook to pay for two directors next year. I can't do it. When one's given a 7% raise and has the support of the people and the staff and the community, I'm not going to vote for it. Forget it. I mean, he signed a contract, he obligated to us. I'm going to fulfill the contract with my obligation too. Okay? And so, and not to mention the chaos it would put us in. With the elections coming up and us unable to hire a director, if we terminated him at certain time, our payroll would shut down. There'd be a lot of things that would go wrong, and our system would be crippled at this point and this time. And really, my biggest concern is, when I look at it, is who's he working for? Okay? Is he working for the board? Is it, is he here to appease us? We hire and fire him, but he's not working for us. You know, it's not a personal thing. He's working for these people that are out here, and he's working for the teachers, and he's working for the students. And it seems like we think he needs to be working for us. And I don't think that's the way it is. And so, you know, if you can't handle being on this board, if your skin's too thin, then find a different job or a different, something to volunteer your time. Because it's tough. It's not fun being here. But I'm trying to make the decision. I think it's the best that the community wants, and it's best for our kids. And when I look at everything that he's done, I see that it's him right now.
Dr. Lawson, what would you like to see happen? Would you like to stay and play out the rest of your contract? Do you feel like this is too much of a volatile situation with some board members? What would you, what are your thoughts on this?
Now, if I was 100% selfish, I'd say buy me out, send me home, pay me, pay me my salary to stay at home. I mean, that's, that's actually, from a 100% selfish standpoint, sounds fantastic. I do not believe that's the right thing to do. And I will say this. I can't think of any of my actions in my professional time in Coffee County Schools where I have acted with 100% selfish reasons. I can't even think of a time I've done it with 50% selfish reasons. As Dr. Nestor observed, the board has until next Friday to hire another director of schools if I'm not there. Now, an interim can be named, and that interim would remain in seat until September 3rd, at which point, a permanent can be hired. So, there are options, and there's ways around it. I'm going to say this. The damage to the district is too great to dismiss me at this time. You will create a turmoil that is unnecessary and actually harmful. And what will happen is, you can't name somebody until September 3rd. If that's an internal candidate, you start a cascade of dominoes where one person gets into this position, another person has to go to that position and that kind of thing. And so, it affects more than just one position. If, if an outsider is hired, it's less. But, again, while there is some attractiveness to being paid to be at home or being paid while I'm traveling or that kind of thing, I do not recommend that as an action the board should take because of the harm it does to the district. So, my desire is to continue as Director of Schools with Coffee County Schools. Now, as far as, as far as this, as far as the tension that board members have referred to and that kind of thing, that has no effect on me. I don't lose sleep. I don't, unfortunately, it doesn't affect my appetite. And I, it really has no impact on my life whatsoever outside of dealing with the board. So, as far as that, I'm fine with whatever this is. And I'm completely ready to continue and continue the work for Coffee County Schools, just like I have for the last five years.
Do you think the situation with the board is affecting the staff at all?
I guess, well, to some degree, maybe. Because I'm going to say this, I had, I had somebody compare it to two parents getting a divorce and feeling like they're caught in the middle. Okay? But that was, that was in a, that was in a small group of staff. We were discussing some situations and that kind of thing, and I had not, and I got to say, maybe that's, maybe that's a valid point. But as I told them, I said, if that's two spouses, I am the spouse that has done everything they can to make it work.
Dr. Nestor, can I just think out loud for a second?
Absolutely. You, you, it's your floor.
I've had a teacher that I respect a lot tell me that I need to voice my thoughts a little more, so I thought I would do so. I am a person who thinks with my heart. And when I think with my heart, I don't want Dr. Lawson to leave. I want to give the Coffee County School District what they want and leave him in charge and continue. My heart does not want to dismiss someone. And then, when I think a little more logically, as I feel like I should to be a board member, I see that this relationship between some of our board members and Dr. Lawson is really nasty, and I don't see it getting any better. I'm not pointing blame on anybody. I just, it is like a divorce. It is very tense. It's, it's not fun to sit here. It's not fun to read about us on the internet and to hear about us on the radio. And I don't know that we can keep going on. So, I am completely torn. I have no idea how I will vote when my turn comes around, because I see it both ways. And I don't know that any other board members feel the way that I feel, but this isn't a fun spot to be in. I don't think there's a wrong answer to this, and I don't think there's a right answer. I think it's just go with your gut and vote. And I don't like it at all, but I just wanted y'all to know where my head's at at this moment.
Okay. Ms. Rose?
I can share something from my own experience. When there's tension with the superintendent, it absolutely impacts the people in the school building. It, it has a chilling effect on teachers, on administrators, because you're just kind of left in, you feel like you're being left in limbo. I think our people have, have worked too hard, too long, to have to live in a situation like that. I think we deserve to, to give them some stability and to let them know that, I mean, you know, if I had my way, I'd, I'd say, let's do a contract renewal, because the school system has to have stability. And I'm sorry, you don't want who's available in September to be your school superintendent. Those jobs were filled a while back.
That doesn't have to necessarily be done by September 3rd, just for everybody to know that. But also, I think we're leaving one big part of this out of our discussion, and that's the parents and the community. We work for them too. We're elected by everybody. And as far as you say that you have never lost any sleep... And as far as you say that you have never lost any sleep, well, I have. I take my job very seriously and I take everything that I do up here to heart. And I hope that the next director does the same thing because we cannot go home at night and forget this. It's very important what we do and, and the decisions we make affect so many people. And it's very, very hard to do that. And, uh, I'm not an adversarial person, but I feel the same as Ms. Rose that we have all gotten into a situation where it's chaos and something, something has to change.
May I respond?
Yes, go ahead.
I'm gonna say this. What I said was, the interaction with board members, I don't lose any sleep over. I have lost my sleep over, I have lost sleep over my job many, many, many times. And there's a key difference there. My job is incredibly important. The kids in this district and the staff in this district are incredibly important. I have given up many, many, many countless hours of sleep over five years to do this job effectively. It's just that I do not lose sleep over what happens in board meetings.
So that shows you right there that you have no respect for the school board if that's not, if that's the case.
No, ma'am.
Well, you don't lose any, so it doesn't matter what we think or how we interact with you?
That's not what I said, ma'am. I said, I do not get emotionally involved enough in this discussion for me to lose sleep. I did not say it doesn't matter.
Dr. Nestor?
Yes.
The one thing I wanna say is, during this whole, whole procedure, the one thing that I can remember coming to mind was the, tons of employees here and people in your favor. We didn't have those people coming up here against him. We didn't have them standing here. We didn't get tons of emails against him. So I just wanna thank the employees of the school system that stepped forward and said how they feel about him. That took a lot of guts. So thank you.
More comments? So right now, the motion on the floor is to release him without cause, basically.
Pay out his contract.
Pay out his contract.
Can we take a break? Can we have a small break, please?
Uh, hold on just one second and yes, we will.
Thank you.
Um, and I guess listening at this, going back and forth, I, you know, if, if, if the community and the teachers are upset with the relationship that him and us are having, I'm not sure they're upset with him. They may be upset with us. So why are we getting rid of him to try to make our relationship better with them? Think that's wrong. Let's take a break. Take a five-minute break and we'll be back at, or actually, oh, that's probably about seven minutes from now. Just a point of clarification, uh, paragraph E of, of section 19 does call for a 30-day notice. 30-day written notice. So that should address that, but I'm, I'm okay either way. I'm okay either way.
I, I'm just, the 30-day notice should take, that would definitely take effect, is the 30-day notice. But if there was any period of time beyond 30 days, if there was not an interim appointed at that time, then, you know, it's, it's just a suggestion.
Thank you.
I'm, I'm fine with that clarification if we need to.
In modifying it until, instead of the 30 days, is that correct?
I think so, yeah.
Okay. And would that be okay to you, Mr. Gilly, to change it until the, till, um?
An interim or 30 days?
Well, he'd say.
Right, I'll, I'll read, I'll read from the contract. It said, "Provided that the board provides a director with 30 days prior written notice of such termination." So basically, the vote would initiate something that would have to be written up and delivered to me. And that would initiate the 30 days. Now, the board at its discretion, uh, you know, obviously, there, there can be changes to the contract with both, with, with agreement from both parties and that kind of thing. So if there was an interim named before the 30 days was up, then the board and the director could potentially agree to, uh, to modification of that language. Or if it goes beyond 30 days and an interim is not as named, then there would not be a director, uh, at least until that interim was named. So it, there's, there's several avenues to go here. But, uh, the, basically, the suggested, the language I would suggest is that, uh, you could put 30, and it all depends upon how the board wants to do this. It could be 30 days or the naming of an interim director. It could be 30 days and until the naming of a interim director. So it kinda depends upon how the wording is done and that's at the discretion of the board.
Mr. Bannister?
I am, I'm fine with that, with the, uh, you know, or the naming of, of a, of an interim director.
Yeah. 30 days or the naming?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
I don't know how that would work. Because if you do, if you say 30 days or the naming of a, of an interim, that's not gonna work because if you don't name a, a, a interim and 30 days run out, then we're, we're stuck in a, in a mess. So we, we need an interim.
You've gotta name an interim before the 30 days.
So it would be until an interim is, is named. Otherwise, we're gonna be in a really big mess. Cause 30 days could come before the interim is named.
Good point, good point. So I'm fine with that, yeah. So an, until an interim is named.
Until an interim is named. Okay? All right. So we have the motion and the second. Is everybody clear about what we're voting on?
Motion as modified.
As modified, until the interim is hired.
So just to clarify, a yes vote dismisses the director without cause?
Correct. A yes vote would dismiss the director without cause and would stay until the interim is hired. So yes, he's released, no, he stays. Okay?
I don't know how that would work. Because if you do, if you say 30 days or the naming of a, of an interim, that's not gonna work because if you don't name a, a, a interim and 30 days run out, then we're, we're stuck in a, in a mess. So we, we need an interim.
You've gotta name an interim before the 30 days.
So it would be until an interim is, is named. Otherwise, we're gonna be in a really big mess. Cause 30 days could come before the interim is named.
Good point, good point. So I'm fine with that, yeah. So an, until an interim is named.
Until an interim is named. Okay? All right. So we have the motion and the second. Is everybody clear about what we're voting on?
Motion as modified.
As modified, until the interim is hired.
So just to clarify, a yes vote dismisses the director without cause?
Correct. A yes vote would dismiss the director without cause and would stay until the interim is hired. So yes, he's released, no, he stays. Okay? Mr. Parsley?
No.
Ms. Jennifer?
No.
Ms. Jones?
Ah. No.
No.
Uh.
Aye.
And the chair votes no. So it fails five to four.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion that we, as a board, sit and discuss a plan for Dr. Lawson for the next year. Is that appropriate?
Well, I don't know if that's under his con- we, we, we're right now under his contract. So that would probably not need to be right now. That's something that we would probably need to put in another additional board meeting or, but under the director's contract, I would say no. Okay? Cause we're specifically talking about his contract renewing.
Okay, so we're continuing as is?
It would assume we're gonna continue till the expiration of his contract next June?
30.
30.
Yes, 2025.
2025.
Is the way my current contract reads.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
May I make a motion?
Yes, ma'am.
I would like to move that Dr. Lawson's contract be renewed for four years.
I'll second the motion.
We've, well, you've had a renew, a, a motion to renew his contract by Ms. Rose and you've had a second for Mr. Crabtree. Okay? Well, same thing as the last motion, you made the.
Is that allowable?
Yes, ma'am, it's allowable. We're talking to discussing the director's contract.
I thought it had to have 15-day notice.
I think it went out inadequate more than 15 days. Yes, ma'am, I made, I made the proper notices and so that's what we're here for. This is the big game right now. Do you wanna make the first comment, Ms. Rose, since you made the motion?
Dr. Lawson's track record speaks for itself. I, I don't, I don't know what more anyone could want from a school director. He's a director I would certainly look forward to working for, excuse me, working with, because he works with people. And for the sake of the staff and the kids and the district. He's the best man for the job. He's homegrown, the roots run deep. He is far more than competent for this position. He's. You got my vote. I don't know what else to tell you. You got my vote.
And, and to clarify, are you referring to the contract that was in the included documents with the board meeting? Okay, yes, ma'am.
Yes.
Other comments? Other comments? I would like to point out that the contract that is in our documents here is the same contract we voted down three times already because it has deficiencies in it. Now, we did go to the Director's Evaluation Committee and work on a contract, and we made great progress there on a contract that addressed the deficiencies, but we have not finished that at this point. So as far as I'm concerned, we do not have a valid contract out there. This one has all kinds of references in it to documents that do not exist, and that was the same reason we voted it down three times before. So that item C on our agenda is to actually talk about the revisions and where we are in that progress of coming up with a new contract, but right now, I don't think we have one.
If I may point out, on the three times that we voted this down, we knew that annual performance agreement was in there. Annual performance agreement was in the document that Dr. McFaul had with this board. There is no annual performance agreement. To me, it was synonymous with an evaluation. Other board members did not agree with me for that. I went back and looked over this contract after we had our meeting, and all I wrote down for contract language was "performance assessment." That's the only thing I can see, other than changing a date or two, that needs to come out of it. I mean, it's been ignored for this long. I think with agreement from Dr. Lawson, I think we could probably fix this after the fact. If we wanted to make an addendum to this or an amendment, if he is in agreement, if he says, "No, by golly, I want a performance agreement that I have to go through," then it stays there.
You don't fix contracts after the fact, but...
Well, you know, we didn't fix them before the fact either, Mr. Ballard. And we had an opportunity to. You don't fix contracts afterwards, and you also don't put your raise in the salary line before you get it approved. I think that we all need to calm down and think about this, because there's a new board coming into play. And some of us will still be here, some of us won't. This is four years that we're thinking about. So people better think about it very carefully.
I do want to clarify that the contract language would be, it would be this year that we are finishing and three more. So it is retroactive to July 1 of 2023.
Well, my thought is, whether you're the director or someone else is the director, this board has to come together with what that director is accountable for. Because I think that's part of the issue now, is that it's not clear what we expected. Maybe it was different from what you thought. But that's got to be all in place before we assign anybody for three or four more years, is the way I look at it. Because we're going to be back in the same mess.
Was there anything that he did in that contract that did not fulfill what he was supposed to do? Or was it the board did not fulfill their obligation? Is my question. Mr. Chair?
Ms. Chair?
Yes.
I think what they're getting at is, we've had numerous opportunities that we probably could have worked on this contract. I think after the last time it was voted down, it just went stagnant too. There was a lot, I think the majority was discussing opportunities for performance goals as far as bonuses toward the director. A really good contract that benefited everybody. It benefited the county, it benefited the director of schools, no matter who it was. It was coming up with a good contract that was honorable on both sides. And it went stagnant after the last vote down in February or January, because emotions took over, I think, more than anything. You know, I have to agree that this, even for a four-year, we're still not at that point because we still don't have a document. I don't care if it's for Dr. Lawson or anybody. We don't have a document that represents the county in a fair enough manner, even our staff or even another director. And, you know, if we're going to talk about another four years with Mr. Lawson, we need to get to work ASAP on another contract. If we're going to look at a contract for another director, we need to get to work ASAP on another contract. And emotions, disagreements, whatever, and there's been a lot of them, are going to have to subside and do this. Because, you know, number one, the voters have kind of spoken to what they expect of us as board members. That's already been done. We're just waiting for September for the changeover. And, you know, that's a lot of new blood that I don't know how, I couldn't tell you how it's going. I don't think none of us know. I don't think we're supposed to know. But we've got to get a document that is actually a good document. And worry about achievement and goals.
May I speak, sir?
Yes, sir.
All right. Well, whether the wording is this wordsmithing, and whether this document exists, whether that document does not exist and that kind of thing. I'm going to say, there is a motion on the floor, and there has been a second, and there is discussion. So unless the two original people are willing to rescind their motions, then there will have to be a vote taken. And I will speak, the thing is, I was not asked what my recommendation is, but I am going to say that the quality of work that this district has received from me for five years will continue for the duration of my time as director, regardless of that time is one year, three years, or whatever. And if there's a document that is missing, then I will work with the board, and we will get that created. Because right now, I've created all the documents I'm required to create. There are certain things that are actually not my responsibility. But if you want the same quality of work for the duration of my tenure as you have had for the last five years, you can vote your conscience on this one.
Well, one other thing, I think two of us went through the director search. And one of the things is, it's extremely expensive. It's extremely, it takes a lot of time. And we're spending a lot of money getting together and interviewing folks, bringing them in. What you're going to hire a new director at is not going to be anything close to what we're paying him, even with the raise. I just tell you, if you look out there right now. So economically for the system, it's probably not, and I hope if that happens, you can surprise me. But I would say, I really doubt that. So, and plus, the division is going to go even further with him, his contract ending, not knowing what's going on. We, I think we've gained a lot of ground with all of our staff in the last few years and the respect they have and wanting to stay on with what's going on. And I think that that's going to drive a wedge between that. And I would, and yeah, it's not four years, it actually would be three years, because we are already a year into this, basically. And so, but economically, and for the best of the system and for what the people want, I think it would be best to renew his contract. Any other comments?
We still have to deal with the fact that there is the tension, and this does feel like, like you said, a divorce. And I agreed with you. And I couldn't vote to make you leave, but I don't know that I can vote to have you stay right now either when we don't know how this is going to play out. Because these tensions are not going to go away, they're probably going to be worse after tonight. And I just think that we should, I know you don't want to wait, but I feel like we should wait a second and review the contract and see how things go and make sure that we can all work together, and the new board work together. I want us to be able to accomplish things and it not be so nasty.
And I appreciate your comments about the new board coming on, but we also need to pay our respect to the past boards. They did their time, they interviewed, we went through a long process, did get the contract with Dr. Lawson, and so be respectful for the people that have already put in their time, not that they potentially put in their time for this community.
Yeah, and I hope that the next go-around, that all board members will interview every applicant, because that wasn't done, and when I was there, you know, not every board member interviewed every applicant. And I think that we probably need to look at that differently too, how we go about it.
They had the opportunity to be at every meeting when they were there.
Yeah, they had the opportunity, but everybody...
I would call that an interview.
But I know there was only a couple of us that interviewed every one of them.
I don't think that's correct. I think we all had meetings, and we'd bring in a couple applicants per night, and then they would have their time to make their point or talk with us, and then we asked them specific questions.
Ms. Chair, what was the timeframe on that one? Two, was it, correct me if I'm wrong, two weeks?
Once we, all right, so the whole process took about three months, three to four months, from when we was trying to originate how we were going to do a search, get the word out. Then you had to get all the applicants in and go over the initial, and I can't remember how many we had. We had quite a few. And we cut those down and offered so many interviews in person. And then we did those over at least three different nights. And we probably had six or eight meetings altogether during the process as a board. Okay? We have a motion on the table. Renew Dr. Lawson's contract that had been presented. We had a second. And so as of right now, his contract ends June 30, 2025. If it was approved, it would increase that for three years. And we'll take it to a vote. Ms. Jennifer, you're first.
No.
Ms. Jones?
No. Aye.
Aye.
Nay.
No. No. Aye.
Chair votes, I think, fails five to four. All right. That's it, we will move on. Action item B, Director's Search Committee. Hearing no motion? We'll go to action item C, Director's Evaluation Committee Revisions.
Is that me?
That would be you.
That would be me. Okay. We met and took a look at the evaluation instrument, and in looking through some of the verbiage that was in there, we talked about some things that needed to be changed. There were some grammatical issues that needed to be addressed. And so I agreed to take this home and go back through it. And Ms. Westmoreland, do you have those copies with you? Okay. I spent some time, the first thing I did as an English teacher was I went back and I made everything parallel, okay? We have parallel structure on all of the statements in the rubrics now. And I found it, I found it a little confusing going back and forth between the statements and the descriptions of the rubrics. So I put the statements above the rubrics. And you can see through there, there are some items that are written in red. Those are changes, recommended changes that I made. And there's nothing in here that I would say is really critical, but I, just to give you an example, number two. "Has an understanding of the needs of the school program, facilities, equipment, supplies, and budget required." Well, under significantly below expectations. "Demonstrates a lack of consideration of current needs of the school system and budget development." Okay, that's fine. But then down below, it says, "Demonstrates a limited knowledge of the need." I mean, it's redundant. It's already stated in there that there is a lack of knowledge, a lack of knowledge of the needs in there in the previous statement, so that does not need to go in there. Same thing in the third one, significantly above expectations on the same statement about understanding the needs of the school program. First of all, we have, "Evidence director has shared needs with at least one parent or community group." Then under that, "Evidence has shared needs with two or more parents or community groups." You get a five for either one of them, so there's no need to have that second statement in there. So those are just the types of things that I went through there and looked at. I've marked out, and you can see in the red with the lines, I've marked out some statements that were in there that I felt like it could all be combined in the last statement there. "Adequate control," look at number four, "Ensures that adequate control and accounting of funds are maintained." "Significantly below expectations," this is where the English teacher kicked in. "Director's budget knowledge is limited," no, no, we're talking about seeable actions here. "Displays limited knowledge of budget." "Fails to require business manager to provide revenue expenditure," and so on. I have no intention of reading this whole thing to you. This is something that requires some study. I would certainly want everyone to go back over this and make sure that I have not changed what the spirit was, the intent was, with these expectations. But there were some things on here, for example, under number six. "Look under expectations." "Gives everybody the opportunity to be heard and handles complaints in a sensitive manner. Treats all employees with the same standards." And then suddenly, "Employees feel respected." How do you go about measuring something like that? Because we, just to put the cards on the table, we had an evaluation that came in from the employees, and we didn't seem to be too interested that they felt respected. But anyway, I changed the statement to "Displays respect for employees." Number seven, "Seeks and accepts constructive criticism from staff." Under significantly below expectations, I did some wordsmithing there. And it says, the original text reads, "Does not have a system in place to ask for and receive constructive criticism." I don't know what a system looks like for that, but I changed it to, "Fails to establish a system to ask for and receive constructive criticism." Again, a system, do you mean an environment that is open to constructive criticism? And then creates an environment in which staff is reluctant to offer criticism? How do you prove this? What is your measurement of that? And the one that really, really threw me was when I got over to number 12. "Seeks and accepts constructive criticism from board members." Got into a little more parallelism there. And then down under significantly above expectations. "Director eagerly requests individual board members to meet with him/her to offer constructive criticism." I do not know how eagerness is measured. I do not know. The next one, "Director shows genuine appreciation to the board member for his or her desire..." The next one, director shows genuine appreciation to the board member for his or her desire to improve director's job performance. And I just got snarky at this point, is this appreciation shown with a gift or a kiss on the ring or do you genuflect? How do you show that appreciation? So I, I think there are a couple in here that need a second look. Everything else was, was grammar and structure. But this is something that, uh, that needs to be looked at by the board individually and then come back as a group. And, uh, on the, the very last page of this, the director of schools overall evaluation score. The verbiage at the bl- at, uh, at the bottom of that page, kind of confused me, it says the system improvement plan goals cannot be evaluated until a system improvement plan is developed. It's too late for a plan to be implemented for the twenty-two, twenty-three, uh, for, for twenty-twenty-two, twenty-three. You know, we have a, a five-year plan that has to be approved, there's a school improvement plan that's done for every school and it is meshed into a district improvement plan every year. I'm not sure where that information came from, but anyway, that's something that needs to be looked at. So I just kind of went through here and, and highlighted the things that I thought needed a long, hard look as we look to, uh, to evaluate a director. And I certainly don't expect any action to be taken on this tonight. It, it was my understanding that I would do the wordsmithing and we would come back into a committee meeting, but that's okay. You have my work here.
Okay.
And, uh.
So, so will you think this would be best sent to the evaluation committee? Or would you like it to be in like the next, uh, work session?
Uh.
Would you rather?
I could, I, I could go with it either way. Do we have another work session before this board is, uh, has turnovers?
There is not one scheduled.
There's not one scheduled. It won't hurt my feelings one bit if the next board wants to look at this and they decide that they want to throw it into the trash and start all over again. If that's what they wish to do. But I tried to do my due diligence with this.
I do want to say I appreciate Ms. Rose's diving into this because a lot of this language is rather esoteric and, and kind of quite frankly boring, so I really appreciate your, your work on this and cleaning it up, so that's great.
Thank you.
Okay. So everybody take the opportunity to look into it and we'll see where the board wants to go. Okay? Action item D, Board Self-Evaluation. And we do have a hundred percent of the board here, so we can actually go over the evaluation. So I guess we need a, a motion to accept the board evaluation. And second, and then we'll open it up for discussion.
Some of.
Okay.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Parsley, second by Mr. Crabtree. So we all participated in uh, the board evaluation results and you've received copies of those. And how you, it, basically it was how we felt that we were doing and how important these items were to us. How would y'all like to address this evaluation? You want to go down through the items? You want to talk about the totals or you just want to accept it?
I think it should be for the public to see how, if we just go over the totals, are they really going to understand what they're, what we're even talking about?
They probably will not.
And they may not even after we discuss it, so that, I mean, that's, it's confusing, so.
Right.
Maybe we just talk about the pros and cons.
Yeah.
Or successes and concerns, I guess, is the way it's termed in here.
Um, we can pick out some of the, okay, so basically it was broken up into several sections. Uh, board meetings, team building, board superintendent, staff relations, vision and board policy, student achievement, board community relations, advocacy, budget finance, Coffee County Board of Educ- and that, there's the, uh, that's the, that's the continual right there. So there's a whole lot there. We can pick out the best parts on the board meeting, we can go down through these and pick out the highlights, the, where we scored high and where we scored low.
There are, there are two pages towards the back of your report, I think it might be the last two pages. Where it summarizes, I'm sorry, the next, the last and the third from the last pages that summarize successes and.
Top six with the greatest success.
And concerns.
Alright, so why don't we look at those, what was it, there's six on each item? So where we felt that we were most successful was, let's write these down, eighteen, twenty-nine, seventeen, thirty-one, thirty-two, forty-nine. Okay? And I'll read these for the public so they will know what they, um, what we're discussing. Individual board members, and this is where we thought we had successes, individual board members avoid making excessive personal requests from the staff. Twenty-nine. Our board sets policies needed for the operation of the school district. Seventeen. The board recognizes staff accomplishments. Thirty-one, board policies are administered consistent with the intent of the policy. Thirty-two, the board has developed an ongoing system to review and update all policies annually. And the last high mark that we gave ourselves was the board requires proper accountability for the expenditure of school district funds. And those all were areas that we marked the highest. Anybody disagree with that? Want to add anything? Concern areas.
Give the numbers on these?
I'm sorry, what?
Should we give the numbers on these as far as the rating or out of, one out of six or, or just read the?
Um, that would be, that would be great, I can go, um, like I say, this is wide open, this is the board self-evaluation, however y'all want to handle it is what, is what we need, whatever we can get out of it or what you want out of it.
You're just saying of the, the ones he read, correct?
Uh, we could, yeah, I mean, it don't matter otherwise, I mean, we could, this gets published on it, on the website anyways, I believe.
If it doesn't, I would, yeah, ask that it did.
It, it's part of the board documents.
Well, on the, on, on the, on those six items with the successes of a possible six, they averaged, uh, it looks like right at five out of six. Of, of what we, the job we thought we were doing and of what we, how important it is to us, it looks like it's about five and a half out of six. It's a little bit higher. So we can take these, we'll do the, the greatest concerns, number twelve, and I'll read it in a second. We, looks like we were about a one-point-five out of six, but the importance we thought was a six out of six. And twelve was, this is the one that we scored the lowest on, the board and superintendent trust and respect one another. It's a one-point-four-three, actually. The second one, number ten, was a once a decision has been made, all members respect the decision and the board speaks with one voice. We scored that a two-point-two, I'm sorry, two-point-two-nine, but we thought the importance of it was a five-point-seven, so nearly a six. And you're welcome to make a comment at any time. Number twenty-eight. So another area that we scored poorly, or we thought we had scored poorly. The board regularly solicits input from the community when establishing future vision of the district. We scored a two-point-one-four out of six, but we thought it was a five-point-five-seven in importance. Number fourteen, our board and superintendent agree on how complaints or concerns to board members should be handled. Our board and superintendent agree on how complaints or concerns to board members should be handled. We scored it two-point-four-three out of six, but we thought the importance was five-point-seven-one out of six. Number twenty-five was another one that we scored poorly on and the superintendent's evaluation considers how well the superintendent has addressed the district goals. We scored two-point-five-seven and we wanted to score eight, uh, five-point-eight-six. So those were our lowest, and there's one we missed, isn't it? Done this one?
The last one.
Eight.
Eight.
Okay. And the last of the, the lowest of all these items that we, the board is open and honest with each other as well as administrators and is able to aim, maintain an attitude of mutual trust and respect. We scored a two-point-two-nine, uh, but the importance was five-point-four-three. So those were the eight highest and the eight lowest of what we scored ourselves on the board. Any comments or input?
Those are very important parts, Mr. Chair.
I'm sorry, what?
Those are very important parts, I'm just talking out loud on the, the, uh, not-so-great ones.
Any other comments about the evaluations or questions? And yes, it will, will it be on our website then, is that correct? Is it already there or can we?
It's only for this meeting, it, it's the board materials for this meeting.
Okay.
It's one of those documents.
Okay.
I, I'd just like to say, I agree with Mr. Gillie, these, uh, these items are very important. I think they're, to me, these items are important enough and those numbers are troubling enough that probably be, ought to be looking at a board self-improvement plan to, uh, get those numbers up.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna disagree there.
Two-way street.
That's, that's three times that, that we've, we've kept coming back toward this end of the table and just pick stuff, I mean, I think we've, we've done a lot, I mean, we, we as board members, I mean, there's nobody in this room that doesn't care about our children.
I didn't say that, I said I think these numbers need to be addressed.
I'm not saying that you said that to me, I'm not saying that a bitch. But what I am saying is here we are in this that we see exactly why we are at the point that we are at. And we know exactly who is left to stay here after September when this board changes hands. And, and we see what the people that have put us in the office, that have voted, that have called us, that have text us, that have told us concern pants and pants and pants and pants, that, you know, we can see it right here, we can see our numbers. We don't get along, we can see it in the numbers. And this isn't from one, just one person, this is this whole board generating this number.
I agree.
Yeah, and that's what she was agreeing with.
So what, how do you change it?
We got a lot of work, you're exactly right.
I mean, how do you change it? You look at this and you say, okay.
Lot of work.
How do you build trust and respect? What's going to be our steps for doing that? How are we going to measure if we are on the process of building? We can't just look at it and go, oh, hell, there it is.
You're exactly right, you're exactly right.
That means that we're going to have to get the right leader that provides trust and respect to everybody. Because a leader.
Don't say it that way, this is about us.
This is our, this is not his, this is our.
Uh, it, okay, number one.
At this point, we are the leaders.
The board and superintendent trust and respect one another, that's two, two ways there.
At this point, Ms. Jones, we are the leaders. You don't need another leader, you are the leader.
Oh, I didn't realize that.
We are all the leaders. We're the ones who are in this situation. We don't trust each other, we don't believe in each other.
No, it doesn't say trust each other, it says the board and superintendent trust and respect one another.
Uh, excuse me, the very last one, the board is open and honest with each other, we don't.
I am open and honest. I think all of us are.
Obviously, some people think we are not because that is one of the lower scores.
I think the real question is how do you improve these areas? How do you move forward?
And honestly, I'm going to be honest. After August, I'm not on the board anymore. I could stand up and say, I really don't care, but I do care. I want it to be a good board, but at the present time, I don't see how it's going to be. Hopefully with the new members, maybe it will be, maybe it'll be much more unified. Whether that's good or bad, I don't know, only time will tell. But if you don't think that we are the leaders, we hired a man to lead the school system, not to lead the school board. We are the leaders of the school board. It's our responsibility to make those numbers better. Not his, not Gary's, none of, it's all of us sitting up here. And if you can't recognize that and understand that, I don't know how I can explain it to you any better.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna own the one comment that was put on there because I'm the one that put it there and it says, this board needs to learn it governs one employee, the director. Most dysfunctional board I've ever served on.
Okay, on number ten, it says, once a decision has been made, all members respect the decision and the board speaks with one voice. I think all of us need to look at ourselves and see if we do that, because I, I respect what was done earlier, it was one voice, I respect that. But we have voted so many times on different issues, particularly this one, when the board wasn't respected as one voice. It's, it depends on, on that person's personal view and then that, number ten is, goes out the window. And that's not the way it's supposed to be, once the board votes, it's one voice.
That's the way it should be, but even in the past year or two, that has not necessarily happened because I think things happen outside this boardroom that have been put in different places. Social media that jeopardizes what we did as a board and it did not sound like, when I looked at some of those, that, that we were speaking with one voice.
I have to agree with that.
Once you vote, that's it, it's one voice.
That's correct, you need to accept. I accept he'll be here till next July and he will not be here after that. I accept that because that's what the vote, but I'm saying there's been other things that, and that's why we scored low, because we do not feel like that we speak with one voice if we vote and then we go out and talk badly about other members, not him. I'm talking about other members of the board. I'm talking about other members of the board.
Do we just need a motion to accept this?
We've already got a motion and a second, we just need to vote. Alright, so this is our final agenda item to accept, um, the, uh, our board evaluation results. And Ms. Jones, you have the first vote.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, that passes nine to zero, like entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.